Would it be feasible to build a small pond out of the fairgrounds? So that when we have these springs like Ag Expo and everything and he's running that water truck, that he could suck out of that pond.
Well, how's the pond, how's the pond gonna get filled up?
We'll be able to fill it now with no water and the canals are in that, that siphon there.
You know, you fill it in the fall so that you have water in the spring.
Well, the liability out there and the, you'd have to line it because it was something pretty significant to keep it from seeping out. So that tells me typically rubber liners which typically are dangerous to wildlife. So you've got to build fences around them to keep the wildlife from drowning. Along with some kids from the racetrack and a couple of other oddball things going on that could happen. And there's a lot of that going on too. So talking to Tanner, he's not opposed to a pond, but he's also wanting to be very careful which direction we step in on that. He's able to get water this time of year. He purchases it through Monzuma Water and does pretty well. And then of course, April they fire the whole system up and he draws all kinds of water. So without saying, is it feasible? Yeah, anything can be built. Is it price wise? Probably, you know, but does it function to the way we would want it to? I'd like to talk to Tanner more about that and the liabilities that could be created from it, yeah. I know for a fact from putting in construction ponds and putting liners in them. If you don't fence the deer out, you're gonna pull a lot of dead deer out of there. They get in and they can't get back out.
Slide out there, that's a slight blipper. And little kids can't get out either.
No.
People can't get out.
So big fences, Constantine wire, guards in the corners. You have to be careful of that stuff, yeah, so, yeah. Something about before we go jump into that one. But can we build one? Yes, sir.
Commissioners, you know, or Rob should know and I think does know, the Dolores County Attorney and I've passed some language back and forth on an agreement on the fairgrounds and other campground.
Cabin?
Cabin campgrounds. So, you know, we're gonna be very minimally committed according to our draft. We'll show it to you before you sign it. But, um, that's, you know, Rob's been in the loop and that's what we kind of included in that agreement was what we wanted to do.
Good.
Sure.
Yeah, that's more of a Dolores County benefit than to us, but we, we wanted to assist them and help them to keep those open.
Sure, I do too.
And they're in our neck of the woods. We've got, we're down there doing stuff, so it should, should work out for both of us.
Yep.
Good deal.
We did get some good snow out of Pleasant View.
Yeah.
We were plowing some roads.
I saw a guy and he said up north, uh, up the river out of Dolores, it weighs eight inches.
Yeah, we were getting about four inches on Road W above Dolores up there in that, uh...
I hope, I hope Louve had got a footer better.
Oh, I do too. So we, we actually, in most cases, everything got pretty good moisture. Uh, the gravel roads did real well, but it melted off, you know, so we didn't have any big issues this morning. Except for out north, we were out, oh, sanding a few little intersections and doing some drift removal. And then in Dolores a little bit. But overall it was good. I mean, we got some good moisture.
Good storm.
The roads were frozen this morning, so we couldn't go blade.
Yeah.
But we're planning on sending the blades out this afternoon, so, so.
Good deal. Good deal.
No, are you done? Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, up with Dan's, Connie, Marietta.
Morning, how are you?
Hi, Marietta, how are you?
Good morning. Good morning, Marietta, how are you?
Hi, John.
Morning Connie, how are you?
Hi.
Chris Christine.
Chris.
Chris. Meet Chris Keenan.
Nice to meet you. James Lammert.
Oh, sorry. Chris.
What's your role, Chris?
We're gonna talk about that.
He doesn't have a role yet, huh?
Oh, I do, I do.
He's got a role for like three weeks now.
Yeah. It's a new role.
He kinda looks like a fawn on a freeway and you gotta...
Yeah.
Oh, you know what? He's come in a running.
Yeah.
He's, he's to the ground.
Sure.
This is Chris Christine, Christine, our new assistant field manager for Minerals and Realty. He manages his staff within Durango and Dolores and helps us out with our minerals workload and realty. And so I'll let him talk a little bit about his background.
Sure.
Very happy to have him.
Yeah, I'm happy to be here. Good morning. Um, I've had over twenty-five years of experience with the federal government. Um, most of that is with the BLM and most of that was in Wyoming. Uh, in Wyoming, I, I was a project lead for some large oil and gas developments and also a uranium mine project that we had up there. And then also a resource advisor for, for a district office before coming here. So, um, I have other experience with the Forest Service, uh, with BIA. Um, I have, uh, experience working with tribal, um, relationships and our trust responsibilities as well. And so that's kind of my background and I appreciate it and I'm glad to be here.
Was you in an area, I know Wyoming's like one of the biggest coal producers for the country. Was you in an area that had the coal or apparently not?
Um, for most of the, most time I was in, uh, my last part as a resource advisor, I was in Rock Springs, Wyoming, where there is a couple of coal mines there. But I was at, uh, the position I had in that, um, with the resource advisor was not in minerals at that time. So, but I was only there for a couple of years, so.
Real good background in oil and gas, has a real good handle on that as well. So, um, like I said, he's hitting the ground running, which we're so thrilled because he comes in behind Justin Abernathy, who has basically been gone for an entire year now. So it took us a little while to get everything. We had hiring freezes and this and that as, you know, the administration changed for a bit, but we're wrapping the foot forward and so...
Are you, are you, are you coming up with any leases, uh, or gas leases on BLM land in, in Monzuma County?
Well, Keenan, as you know, we just recently had our yearly, um, lease sale in March. And there were three parcels in San Miguel and one in Apodaca County and all of those were success, success we did upon. Um, so right now we're switching over to the new leasing reform direction that just recently came out of our Washington office on January thirty-first. So we're waiting for further direction on how that might proceed. But kind of the key talking points with that are, as you know, we had originally just done an annual, one time a year, a lease sale. And we called it orderly leasing and that each field office would only process one leasing package a year. That has since changed and so we may be up to having four, um, lease sales a year in a field office. The BLM is required by regulation to have four quarterly lease sales. We were just kind of chunking it up so a field office only needed to do it once a year. That direction has since changed and so we may have up to four lease sales a year in a field office.
That'll be busy.
That'll be busy.
The staff, our staff is going to be very busy.
And then on the submission of expressions of interest, which is how they work for lease requests. So, um, depending on how many expressions of interest a field office receives, we may have up to four lease sales that we're processing a year. So stay tuned. Um, we won't receive our package of expressions of interest until somewhere around June first. That's how it's gonna work since we just got done with our annual lease sale. So we'll know a lot more in June, how many parcels, if any, we would have to process for what we would say the December lease sale. So it's gonna be a six-month processing period, whereas previously it was about a nine-month processing period. And so we're gonna have a little bit of funky overlap right now as we go from the old system to the new system. But basically what we're looking at is if we have expressions of interest in June, our next lease sale will be in December. So we can tell you more as we learn more. We're still waiting.
But then, but then in the coming year it will get more frequent, is that correct?
It could get up to quarterly. Yeah, so we'll have overlapping.
So we'll have more than one lease.
Will Canham be in part, any part of this? Canham doing...
It's already over eighty percent leased. The only leasing that is allowed in the future is for drainage purposes, so...
So you're already eighty percent leased out?
We could receive expressions of interest for, you know, for those purposes, um, with the joining, um, operators. That, that is another caveat to that. So we don't know if we would get expressions of interest, but if we did, we would, we would process them under the Trace Rios process.
What is your sentiment on Senator Gardner's proposition and Grand Junction's push and press and proposition to move the BLM headquarters to Grand Junction?
You know, um, I think that if the BLM moves to the western United States, it would be awful handy to have them in Grand Junction. But, um, we don't really maintain an opinion on that, Keenan. If they wanna be in Grand Junction or Washington DC...
That's being politically correct. Connie, come on.
But you know, it is, it's the truth. We can work with DC, wherever they're at, DC.
Now, you gotta tell me it would be much handier, much more efficient, much, it pluses out the kazoo to have their headquarters two hundred miles to the north of us, would it not?
You know, I think there's, there's good things and bad things with that, Keenan. There's obviously a reason why they're back in Washington is to work with the infrastructure back there and, and the congressional statutes back there. Remember that there's a state office that we work through before we work directly with Washington. So, you know, I could see anytime you have the people closer to the, the resources, nice. But we've been making it work for a lot of years with them being in Washington.
Well, let's, let's qualify that.
What do you guys think about that?
I think, I think it's the only, I've, I've watched many businesses and ownerships and lots of different entities and absentee ownership and absentee is not a good deal.
Huh.
And I think you, if you're going to manage a resource and it's something to scale of what you have out here in the west, your headquarters ought to be out here right where your resource is at.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for sharing that.
Absenteeism is not a good thing.
Well, so you'll be happy no matter what happens, huh?
I'm, I'm always happy. Keenan, I'm just happy to be here and work with you guys. Except for when I'm not happy, right? The last item I had from Trace Rios, other than introducing Chris to you, is that we're working with your staff on renewing the Tozer Pit, um, minerals contract. So I, we wanna be able to get that done and re-upped for another ten years. And had a great on-the-ground meeting, so really appreciate you guys working with us on that. And we should have no interruption in availability of gravel, so...
Can you give us an update, uh, the timeframe on the Phil's World appeal?
The Phil's World Appeal, we responded to the request for stay, which is that we've got certain timeframes, you know, that we adhere to with the IBLA. And so we have sent our response up for that stay. And basically what a stay does is that they requested to not implement the decision until the appeal is heard by IBLA. And the appeal process can take, you know, from a few months to a couple of years. There's no really deadlines or timeframes on that. So what we're waiting to hear from right now is a decision on whether or not a stay will be granted.
You all objected to the stay?
Um, we don't necessarily object. We tell them all the reasons why we feel like we don't need to have a stay. And so we sent that package in, um, and so we're waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah, why wasn't all this done on the front end of the going into the Phil's World? Why now, why does, why does this couple, uh, feel like they didn't have a chance to, uh, discuss their difficulties with the Phil's World expansion on the, on the preliminary? I mean, my gosh, we did, how long have we been doing public involvement in this stuff and...
Yeah, Keenan, you'd have to ask them, so...
I'll tell you my take on reading it, cause I read it was, their argument was is we've gotta protect the deer so that we can shoot them later.
Yeah, yeah.
That's exactly what their argument said. It was ridiculous. It's self-centered in my opinion and it's, it's, uh, thinking of oneself and not everybody else in the community. And I hope you print that so they can read it.
So that's where we're at in the process. Um, we'll wait to hear on the stay, granting of the stay or not, and then we'll, um, respond to the field points.
Who will make that decision? A judge or...
The IBLA judge, yeah.
The IBLA judge.
Yeah, so that'll go up into that process and they're back in West Virginia or Virginia.
West Virginia.
See, they should be out, they should be out here making decisions on their land out here, not in the west.
Doesn't make them work any faster, but...
And you know, they, 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 um, look at all the appeals. So, you know, they put it in the docket and they address it as it comes up on their docket, so...
So you cannot proceed with the expansion of Phil's World until that's been determined, is that correct?
Um, until the stay decision has been made.
And you said that might take a couple of years?
Um, no, the stay actually has a timeframe on that. So we're waiting to hear back from that. It's, um, forty-five days. So we should be able to know by the end of April whether or not a stay has been granted. And then if that is, is granted, then we can't proceed until the appeal is heard, Keenan.
But if the stay is not granted, then you can...
But if it isn't, then we can proceed with implementing it.
Who makes that decision?
The IBLA does that.
So they're...
Yeah, so we wait for that.
Tell me what the IBLA is.
It's like the Brotherhood of Land... Of Lands Appeal. It's like within the BLM, different than the Forest Service, we have this IBLA, which allows us actually to resolve things at a lower level. Um, and usually they will just come and say either yes, it's good to go, or no, you didn't do the appropriate amount of work, BLM. Um, you know, they try to move as quickly as they can. And it is an advantage. That means it doesn't go right to protest or appeal because that board can resolve things at that level.
So, and, and really what we're responding to is procedural side of the, you know, decision. And make sure that we've done our due diligence. You cannot like a decision and appeal, but, you know, IBLA does really look at was the analysis appropriate and did we, you know, address all the issues out there, so... Chris, do you wanna add anything?
No, I think that's, it's going to very well.
How about Sand Canyon Parking Lot? Where are we at?
Yay! Um, I'm reviewing, we have four alternatives right now. I'm reviewing those. I'm hoping that next month's meeting I will bring David Sanders and we'll lay out our scoping, um, schedule, which should come along fairly soon. One issue, uh, we're figuring out, um, how to work with is that, um, on some of that land, there's a, a class three VRM and on the Thomas property, there's a class one VRM, which is more stringent. So given that it's... It's visual resource management. So say you were in the middle of the monument where you don't see anything, you have a class, you know, or a class two actually is what we have. We don't have class ones. Those are usually relegated to park service. Um, so it's just any changes in there. But because we're in McCallmore Canyon, because we have all of that landscape around us that's farming, we're just looking, are there other options given the actual setting of that? And we, we're looking at four alternatives right now. So I'm very excited. I'm excited for you to meet David Sanders and to see where we're at. And again, you know, um, James has been, uh, working with us and helping us conceptualize, um, some ideas about where parking might work because of his experience as a landscape architect. So it's been invaluable in, in helping us just look at the issues there and, uh, what we've got to work with and, and what the options are, so...
How does the process work? Can you fill us in? So you're gonna pick an alternative?
No, we're gonna, uh, analyze all our alternatives. We'll send that out for scoping after we analyze all of those and get the input back from the public and move forward. Pick an alternative or we can pick, if we analyze everything in those four alternatives, we can mix and match as well. So that gives us flexibility as managers to look at all the options, pick what's best, maybe phase some of the things that are, are in that, so, um...
When do you contemplate sending it out for scoping?
I'm hoping, uh, end of April, by the end of April.
Yeah, and it will be the environmental analysis. So it'll typically be a thirty-day comment period on that analysis, right? Yeah, so we're looking forward to getting a lot of good input from the public. We've worked very hard on the alternative development, so we feel like there's...
And very long.
Yeah, we think, as, yeah, I'm sure the camera... But we're, we're very excited. I think the investment in time has paid off. It's given us a chance to kind of take that step back and kind of pull together a bunch of really great ideas. And I think the county's played a really important role in that, so we've really appreciated the partnership on that, so thank you.
And it's really mixed because there's some Trace Rios, there's some county, there's some BLM. So the fact that we've been able to, you know, uh, work together to figure out the best option because we have the same issues, um, has been really, really good. Um, the other thing with David Sanders on board now, we're able to start thinking a little bit about where our recreation program is going. And one of the things that we are looking at now, we're looking at at that County Road Inn area and some of those access points to the monument, uh, twenty. County Road twenty is one of those. Uh, we realize that there are some needs, uh, closer to the community for some actual trails. And of course, you know, the other place we're gonna be looking at is off of the top of Sand Canyon, off of, uh, Big Point and seeing about additional trails at that elevation. Uh, our problem is always gonna be that issue of access and parking. So that's what we're really trying to identify, some different places where maybe four or five cars could just park. The other thing that we're doing is, um, we're developing a destination strategy. Uh, that's basically, um, an opportunity for us to better inform the public about what the opportunities are on the monument. So we will be addressing, uh, sort of a front country, which is really like Lowry and, um, the Anasazi Heritage Center. Then mid-country, which kind of is more like, uh, Lowry, Painted Hand. Um, well, some of Sand Canyon is front country and then some of that is mid-country. And then there's the back country, which we're not gonna be creating destinations because that is the decision in the plan. And, but there's no reason you can't go out there as long as you know how to be safe, have a good experience. You know, it's, it's really deceptive. You look out there and you don't even see how big those canyons are. No cell phones, no water, no help if you get stuck. So, yeah, if you want to have that experience, it's really to discover for yourself. So as part of that, you've probably seen our Sand Canyon newspaper before. Well, this is going to be revamped. This will be, this part of it will be shortened. This will become the whole monument, not just Sand Canyon. So it will also start, it will include natural resources, geology, the story about, you know, CO2. So when people go on the monument, they know what's going on. So we're revamping this and then we've just met with our partners, um, and our volunteers. Uh, James was at last week's meeting and we're trying to identify, you know, what's the information missing that people need? Um, so then instead of all these expensive brochures, um, we're gonna take all of this stuff that we've had before. This will become incorporated into here. Um, so we'll only have one product and our tear-off sheet, which, one of the things that we know is that this map stinks. And so, uh, well, I think it's just, um, pretty much everybody has talked about, you know, look how big your legend is. It's like you gotta have your glasses and your, you know, phone to interpret the words. I mean, it's just too big and it's not friendly. So, uh, a sub-effort of this is really revamping all of this. And James is involved in that, so if anybody has any kind of input, anything from the public they wanna see in there. Um, we just need to get something that's easy to use and it may be that we also, this is blank, expensive space we're wasting. So we may do, uh, you know, frequently asked questions. So the point is to make sure that people have a great experience, that they know how to be prepared for it. We get people who come, they don't really wanna get out of their car. They wanna drive their car the whole way and never get out. Then you have people that wanna explore the back country.
Marietta, one thing, I don't know if on that map you have your entrance to go into Hovenweep on County Road BB. Uh, move, move that to CC and...
Yeah, and I think, uh, hopefully...
Are the signs still up?
Yeah.
Hovenweep has been working on a new sign, uh, I think too, that will go there and direct people that way. Includes, can, or at least includes Lowry, um, on that. The other thing we're looking at, since you bring up Hovenweep, is, uh, we've just told them we wanna start talking about this, but we would like to connect some trails between the Hovenweep units, uh, to each other and onto Painted Hand and create some loops because there's a nice...
Are these all hiking trails or any of the motorized trails?
Not at this point. We're just, we're really just starting to explore because we, again, have not been able to do that. But there's so much opportunity there. We don't really wanna trip over ourselves, but we just know it takes a while, so we wanna start getting things out, um, you know.
At least some bicycling trails would be, be good stuff.
Well, we'll see how that goes. Well, hey, e-bikes, have you got your e-bike yet?
No.
My sister's got one, they're neat.
That's how I bike.
Connie, I got a question.
Remember your e-bikes go on motorized routes.
Well, I can just...
No, no, they're not, I don't consider them motorized, at least not at the Grand Junction. They let them get on their trip. They had a good ruh-ha-ha.
Well, it's big, uh, extreme constraints, restrictions for them to be on the trails. I'm just gonna get some cards with a, a clothespin and stick it on the back of my bicycle, you know, remember that?
Make it sound like a motorcycle, yeah, your deck of cards, yeah. You gotta be old enough to remember how to do that, man.
Yeah, that's right.
Larry Don, you had a question?
Good call, Marietta.
The question is, is, so Thirty-Six, where we went and changed it to red, to green, to, to get back there for the horse, um, trail and all that. Um, well, I tell you, as commissioners, got a lot of slack over that from that community for doing that. We also got sued. We were successful in the lawsuit. Is there any way the BLM can help the county and tear that fence down so we can get them horses out there? Because we have a neighbor there where they're trying to, wanting to get into, what is... Is there any way that you can speed the process up to take the fence down so that those people can get out there on their horses?
Yeah, Larry Don, I think the challenge with that is that we don't have legal access. As you, you know, the county, um, surveyor clarified and the BLM surveyor looked at it. There's just a few inches of, a strip of private land.
But hasn't there been access there before? Hasn't there previously been access?
You know, I think people have accessed the BLM, um, kind of informally.
So that means that there's access probably. And so I wouldn't be so quick to just jump and say we don't have access just because there's a strip of land there.
Right, we, we are a little bit different than you folks are as far as, you know, that showing that we have long-term access. We really have to protect it legally. We can't just say people have been accessing it for thirty years or more, they have legal access. So, um, I think we're gonna have to work together between the county and the BLM to figure out how to get that access. Obviously, that's a beautiful place for access to, uh, to the public. If we could connect that strip of private land that we, you know, does not allow for the public to cross.
But have you, have you went out and asked the landowner if he's willing to make a deal?
Um, we have been told that there is no interest whatsoever from that landowner. So no, we have not approached them formally, just because we've been hearing from other people in that neighborhood that they do not have any interest in allowing access.
Should we have James ask them? Dietrich, ask them because, uh, you know, I don't know the complete history of it, but my thoughts are there absolutely is legal access there. Uh, and, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe, I mean, I thought there was even a gate that was already put in there for legal access.
Right, I think people just thought that the B, I mean, we thought the BLM touched.
Good enough, good enough. There was a gate put in there, people were using. So maybe we have at least Mr. Dietrich check, ask the landowner and if they say, uh, you know, if they say yes, great. And we can write something up that, that allows it, that would convince BLM. And if not, um, you know, there's, there's likely legal access there anyway. And we could, we could take it to court if it's, if it's a big enough issue for us. Um, whether the BLM, you know, agrees with it or not, we, there's, I think there's likely legal access there.
Why would we not at least ask? Would, maybe they want something?
I think we're happy to do that, Larry Don. We've just been really kind of waiting to, to get into our travel management and, and, uh, you know, formally talk with them once our travel management proposals have come out. Um, we can start talking to them now and I appreciate that the county would be willing to come and sit down at the table with those owners. I can say though, one of the things that we wanna make sure is that that's a pretty large piece of BLM land. So we are also looking at other access points because we, we do believe in the BLM that it's important for people to get access to their public lands. So, uh, we're first gonna look at those places that we do have existing legal access because it is, it does take time to go through the courts if you were to ever do that. But obviously, we always wanna have a cooperative, uh, conversation with people who wanna provide access first. And because there may be other access points to that entire chunk, I think that, that's really what I told James, um, is that we're, we're looking at those other access points, realizing they may be on the east or the south or the west side of that particular piece of land. The beautiful part is we do maybe have some other options there to get people onto that piece. It may not be from the north.
But what would the timeframe be for that?
We're looking at it right now, Larry Don, the other access points. So our interdisciplinary team is looking at all those different county roads. Um, and that is the key, the county road access with the public lands, so...
But now you gotta realize our point of view.
Absolutely.
We struck our neck out for you and, and we didn't get anything returned. It was like cry wolf. So we're gonna be very hesitant for the next county road when we, we've, I mean, like I said, we've been sued.
I understand.
So it's, you know, we, we just like to see a follow-through. I'll give you an example. So I'm at Ten Cane, which is third command there at the BLM in Washington DC, because the Trump administration, for the first time that I've been told in, in the, uh, history, has invited all fifty counties to come and meet, uh, the inter-government affairs at the White House. And so there's fifteen states that they, they invited Colorado and Arizona when, when we were out there. And we went and we got to listen to, um, the interior and they, so Republican, Democrat, Independent sitting there. And it was a Q and A, it was, it was, um, and the point was that they're like, who better to be a partner than the county commissioners with the federal land agencies? Because we have experience with, not only with the land, but with the people. And, but yet it doesn't seem like a simple act of getting an access on Thirty-Six could be accomplished or a Phil's World expansion done or a parking lot in Sand Canyon. I mean, I've been a commissioner for five years. I mean, I've been a commissioner for five years. These projects have been talked about for five years and not one of them's completed. And, I mean, so it's discouraging and I wish there was a way we could work together and figure out how to finally get a project completed. Instead, you know, people only wanna talk for so long and then they want to actually have action.
Yep.
Or they'll give up on it.
Yes.
Or they'll walk away, you know, and.
So, how can we work together to, to get access to that BLM ground? How can we work together? I mean.
Well, and I think we are, Larry Don, and I, I definitely apologize for your commitment that you made on Summit. We had no idea that there was six, a six-inch strip of land. Um, and so, my mistake in that we should have probably done the survey beforehand. Everything we saw in our mapping system showed that they touched. Um, you know, to go out and, and show that there's a, I think it's like six inches or it's very, very small.
I think it's probably insignificant.
There's probably an oversight in the subdivision layout when they did that subdivision in the road right away. It was probably an, probably an oversight that they didn't, I mean, but that can still, that can still, as our attorney says, that can still be mitigated. I mean, if we're still wanting a parking lot.
Let's keep talking about it because I think it is important.
Let's have you tell us what we need to do to get you to cut your fence, a hole in your fence and put a parking lot up there.
Well, we do need to go through that, um, environmental analysis process. And, and I think, Larry Don, that kinda stems to, or stems from the whole idea of sometimes our processes do take long because we have such a public involvement commitment through a lot of our laws, you know? And, and National Environmental Policy Act is a big one.
But this is a question I have for you. Have you started the analysis?
Hold on.
For the environmental analysis? Have you started for that parking lot on Route 36?
Well, that's tied into the whole travel management analysis that we told you we will be sending out the proposed action here real soon. And we've been working very closely with your GIS folks, the Roads Department, we've done all that inventory work.
What I don't understand is why do you, why can't you cherry pick? Why can't you say, you know what, this is a priority? This is what we came to the county for a year ago to try to accomplish. Why don't we pull that out of the, out of the travel management plan?
Do a NIP on that.
Do a NIP on it first, get the process started so that if we, these, uh, problems that we have with the access issue are rectified, then we're, we're two years in advance of getting the parking lot. If we, if we don't, why can't you do that? Isn't there a process that you can do that?
I think we're so close to rolling out this proposed action, Larry Don. I don't know that at this point, there's a value in pulling that out. I think there's also a real value in analyzing the whole Summit access area together. Because we wanna show the, the private landowners in this community that we're trying to do our due diligence and make sure that, you know, where we have public access, we're gonna, you know, pursue that first. We honestly believe that six inches was not there and I think we were all surprised by that. So, I apologize to the county that, you know, we honest to goodness thought, in talking with all of our folks, that we had those two pieces touching. Sometimes that comes around and, and surprises you. With that, we haven't totally given up on the standpoint that maybe the private landowner would be agreeable to provide, you know, a piece of access over those six inches of private property. Um, we're still gonna analyze it, you know, and I think that that will give us an opportunity to have the public give us input on how important is this to you, you know? When we may be able to have access points from the other, um, parts of Summit.
Do you guys have lawyers that you consult with as far as that would tell you that, oh, there's no access there or that there's access?
Well, our surveyors are really telling us, um, confirming that the county surveyor's, um, survey was correct.
Right.
Now, as far as that kind of long-tenured incidental access and whether or not that would be upheld by the courts, that would, we would have to talk to our solicitor's office there. It depends. Um, we work through our staff roles to get advice from them. So, I would bring this up through our lands department first.
Can you just ask them?
Yes, absolutely. I will do that.
Just give me a name or number or something.
I will do that.
That would be great, thanks.
And we'll, we'll stay in, in contact with you. But, Larry Don, I appreciate that you're frustrated. We're a bit frustrated. We thought it was a beautiful piece of public access that this community would enjoy. And so, I very much appreciated that you guys took the wherewithal to change those county roads from red to green. Um, I appreciated that you looked at the plaits to look at other areas that were red roads and are going to now be green roads. I think overall, that does the right thing for the community and access to public lands. So, please don't feel like it's all for naught. I think there's a huge commitment at the BLM and the county can maintain and will continue to maintain in the future. That being said, I think we've just started working together better and more efficiently in the last couple of years. So, I've appreciated that. I think that we need to keep moving forward. We've got a lot of synergy right now in working with this board and we see the value in that partnership. And I've always said that from the first day I got here is our relationship with the county is so important because you have certain jurisdictions that the BLM doesn't. And we have, you know, the need to allow access and you have a, as a public road agency, you have a lot more power in that. That is powerful.
You said the right word, Con, you said the right word.
Well, well.
So, with that, and, and I wanna say, um, on Sand Canyon, I'll let Marietta speak to that, but we're, we're there with Phil's World. You know, we still had to do the public process, we still had to work through. And you guys were instrumental in helping us with, uh, negotiating through the State Historic Preservation Office. We had a lot, lot of work to do with Eagles Nest and rerouting of routes. But when you involve the entire public, every step of the process, it takes a little bit longer. It takes time. And that's just the nature of the federal process sometimes, guys, and like.
And then you get somebody that throws a monkey wrench in it after it's all wrapped up and it's good and done and bingo, we got one more shot at it.
I think it's a given. The, the question does not need to be asked any further than if, that locals, if they want access to their public lands or not. I think that that is a given. The only people that don't want access don't live here. Because why would anybody not want access to their public lands? It's just, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, I'll make the commitment before this board to sit down with that private landowner and have James there and we'll talk to them and we'll do our best. Um, so, I will give it, you know, give it that go.
It's not land, it's not property he's ever gonna be able to use for anything. I mean, it's a, it's a nonusable.
Well, I, there's a.
It's an appendage.
Maybe he needs a couple of rolls of gravel. Maybe there's something out there that, but maybe not, but just, you never know the answer unless you ask.
Right.
Well, I do wanna say, uh, to support Connie, that this has, ever since Connie came here, this has been not only Summit, but public access to these places, especially closer to communities. It has been a, a desire and, uh, you know, a challenge for her. And she is truly committed to this and was equally as devastated, I think, when this, this happened. So, I want you to note that behind the scenes, in terms of this kind of thing, is she's committed to this public land and that. And, and it does take more time and that's the segue kind of to Sand Canyon. You know, we inherited a parcel of property that had its challenges, where there was an expectation that we would be able to build a parking lot that would allow us the amount of use. And we're looking somewhere in the vicinity of, you know, thirty-five, forty parking spots, which is the use we have now. Um, and it has been a challenge because of that, it's been a challenge just because of where we are and the safety issue on the roads. Um, it's every step of the way, you know, we've had different acquisitions. So, finding out all those little things that we're, we're hiding and it being in a monument, I realize that takes more. I, I always like to look at it as though it's gonna get easier after this.
You know what we should have done, Marietta? What we goofed up is we left Tan and, and BLM buy that land. We should have left it, the land property and private ownership, gone in and built the parking lot, done all of that and said, here, now buy it. Now buy it. And I know them and I know now, we'd have done something like that.
Why don't you sell it back to the county and we'll go along?
Because it's not about me.
Yeah, let's make a deal. Let's make a deal.
Door number.
You know what, keen and one aside, we are, um, learning that recently some of the GoCo funds, they're changing the rules a little bit on those. And you are, are actually, we're going to be able to use some of those GoCo funds on federal lands. So, a partnership available with the county, nonprofits and the federal government is so much more plausible now. So, I think we need to work with all those tools in our toolbox to, to, together. And I've always said that and you know.
And I want you to then go from, after that toolbox is filled up and working well, we need to go to the Land and Water Conservation Fund and say, okay, rather than just buying property with all this six hundred or eight hundred million dollars, let us have some of that money to do some of the development on the land we bought with your money. Let us have some of that money to help us maintain and work on the lands that we bought with that money.
Interesting concept. So, good luck with that.
Well, that should be your, that should, yeah.
Well, we're, we're not the politicians here, guys. We're the, we're the managers.
You're the, you're the agency director, you're the directors of the agency, you're the director of the agency.
We're the directory of units within the agency.
So, and, and I love that you guys have those great relationships with the governor's office and congressional staff. Those partnerships and how that affects, uh, the laws that you wanna see changed or, you know, amended or whatever is such an important role for counties. I've always believed that the counties are the hearts of that and working with the federal government at the ground level. And I think you guys have shown that you're, you're committed to work with us and we've really appreciated that. I think we, working with you, have come such a long way during your, um, tenure as, as commissioners. And, uh, so thank you. And, and please know there is a huge value.
For me that.
Level of frustration, I get it, Larry Don.
Yeah, for me, it's when we actually see something on the ground that has been done.
I'm trying, bud, I'm trying.
And that's where the, the success was.
Yep. And we'll, we'll be out there together working on Phil's World and some other great projects. I know, I know.
And you keep pulling for them to bring that federal officer.
I don't think that that's my role.
I think you need to express your, I think you need to express yourself on that.
I'm happy here. I've got an office here, so we're good to go. So, with that, I think we're, we're done. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, you will be seeing us out and about. So, thank you, commissioners.
So, I'll just leave it up here.
Thank you, Marietta.
And I'll get with James to set up that bend of the land.
Gentlemen?
Oh, okay. Hey, morning, Matt.
How are you?
Good, you?
Good to see you, sir. Hi, Matt. You guys? Ah, good morning. Um, thought I'd do things a little different, so I made you guys some packets. So, care package is straight for me to you. One for you guys. Um, I thought I would start out, since it's been a while since I talked to you guys, so, um, I'll try to make it brief because I know I'm a little bit behind, but I'll start out kind of bigger scale statewide stuff that's going on and then kind of wind up with more local issues. Um, so, the first thing is I gave you guys two packet or two information sheets. Um, you know, we've talked in the past about, uh, the funding challenges that CPW is facing. Uh, so, there was legislation, they attempted it last year and it was unsuccessful. So, this year we've, uh, we've moved forward. We have kind of a more scaled-down version of the bill. Sorry, the one that raises the hot peaks? Right, right. And so, basically, um, this year what they're proposing is that, uh, for most, this is resident licenses only, but essentially, you know, resident licenses for, uh, resident year-long round fishing elk gear tags would go up about eight dollars. And essentially, that would put us with, um, the last time we had a fee increase was in two thousand and five. They figure inflation's been about thirty percent since that time. So, by increasing those fees by eight dollars, that essentially puts us back where we were back in that two thousand and five, two thousand and six time period. Um, one of the other important things that they've done is we've, you know, last year it's like, well, give us this money and we'll do some good stuff. Well, this year we're trying to, uh, we've identified sort of ten top goals of how we would try to spend that money. So, um, the sheet that has the four pictures like this on the back of that page, what's got the big one sheet, that talks about what those goals are that we're gonna try to, to do by the year twenty twenty-five. Uh, so, that includes things like try to grow the number of hunters and anglers in Colorado. Um, you know, expand access for hunters and anglers and outdoor recreationists. And that's certainly something that we hear on a statewide level especially is that, uh, the opportunities to, to go and to hunt and to fish and, uh, see wildlife are being diminished with development and other stuff like that. Uh, trying to make sure that we have healthy big game populations. Um, you know, work on more projects like we've done some, started doing some wildlife highway crossings. Um, so, they did a big one up and, um, up by Middle Park. And so, we're actually hoping to try to do one, uh, here in the southwest part of the state. We've been working with, uh, the Southern Ute Tribe, and so, there's a big migration corridor kind of there by, by Navajo, yeah. And so, that's one of the ones that we've identified. But I mean, uh, we're hoping that if we can get this additional revenue, I mean, certainly here in Montezuma County, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunities. Um, we wanna increase the number of fish that are being stocked. Uh, we have some dams that the state owns that we need to do some repairs on. So, um, just, just briefly, just that information that, um, you know, I think this year, we're sort of answering the questions of what we would like to do if we're able to get this to go through.
Matt, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're gonna bring it up, this Muscle Free Colorado Act.
Mm-hmm.
But you're saying there's gonna be two separate pots of money?
Yeah, they're set, yeah. And so, last year they, they lumped them together. This year they're two separate issues. So, there's the, the resident fee increase and then there's the separate ANS legislation. Um, so, there are two separate pots of money. And that's one of the things is we've talked about, um, you know, our ANS program was very reliant on the severance tax monies, which is those monies have decreased. That's really hindered our ability to, to be, um, as active in the ANS stuff. That's why we've had to get more partnerships. And so, with the, uh, and it's, maybe I can go ahead and segue.
Well, before you get to that, when you, back to this, you said that, um, you know, you're trying to increase the herds. So, somebody told me that there's thirty-seven hundred mountain lions in the state of Colorado. Would that be a, a right estimate? Can you tell me?
Gosh, for a statewide, I wouldn't know off the top of my head. Um, I mean, I guess that's probably in the ballpark, uh, but I'd have to get back to you on that.
But, but say that, let's just say that he's right.
Sure.
And there is thirty-seven hundred. Um, so, a mountain lion kills one deer a week?
Right.
And then, is it true that some mountain lions kill two deer a week?
They can. I mean, anything certainly is possible.
So, if, if part of those mountain lions kill two deer a week?
Sure.
And there's thirty-seven hundred, that means that five thousand deer a week are killed in the state of Colorado by mountain lions.
Okay. Uh, I went to school in Texas, so my math is a bit poor, but yeah. No, that, that sounds right.
I think your math works.
Yeah.
If what I'm saying is true and, and there's five thousand a week and there's fifty-two weeks, that means that there's two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, that are killed a year.
Sure.
By mountain lions. And is there any plan to reduce the, and I also know that the quota, that there's a quota for mountain lion hunting in our area.
Right.
Once that quota is filled, then, then they're done. And I've heard that all of the quotas have been filled in our area except for maybe Unit Seventy?
I was gonna say, I don't think the seventy-two, seventy-three stuff has, but the north stuff has. I don't know if the disappointment at Seventy has. Um, so, I'll, that was another point I was gonna make, but, um, so, lion plan, I think I've talked with you guys before about it. Um, we're going to a new statewide mountain lion plan. And so, it's a more regional base because one of the things we've realized with some of the research is that we're trying to manage mountain lions on a very small scale, like, okay, we're only gonna allow this many here, this many here. Lions use the landscape differently. So, um, with this new plan that's hopefully gonna be getting rolled out the next year, it allows us a lot more latitude. And we've also done some analysis that we think we have the capacity, we can be harvesting many more mountain lions than we currently are. We're pretty conservative in that management. So, we're hoping to increase that. Another thing that we're really hopeful for is, uh, this new plan gives us the ability to have kind of focal areas where we can try different management schemes. And one of the things that we wanna do is try, uh, currently you can't use electronic calls to, to harvest or hunt mountain lions. Uh, but it can be effective. And especially here, like around Cortez, they have a lot of lions. Nobody's gonna turn out with dogs because there's too many checkerboards, small private property pieces. Instead, we wind up as the managers or with Wildlife Services having to harvest these problem lions. So, we're hoping that we can increase that. So, our hope locally is we wanna increase that harvest because we wanna try to push that population down. And we're hoping that we'll have more latitude. So, yes, we're looking to, you know, where it's appropriate, which in the southwest of the whole region, Montrose, Denison, we think we can harvest more lions safely, still have healthy populations. That's what we would like to see. And that would help us, you know, with our elk and deer numbers, as we've talked many times, we're very concerned about those numbers. And so, there is the possibility that because our numbers are already low, even if, whatever that additional pressure is from lions.
Bears or.
If we can reduce that, hopefully that will, we'll see that response in our wildlife populations for elk and deer. So, yeah, that's one of the things that we're, we're moving towards. So, um, just, sir. So yeah, that's one of the things that we're, we're moving towards. So, um, just, sir.
Two hundred and fifty thousand deer is a lot.
Yeah.
That's not counting any bear or anything else.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just some brief information on that. Um, on the Muscle Free Colorado, so that should be the next page. Um, this one, basically what it would do is it would, uh, establishes like a stamp that would be on any motorized boat or sailboat. So if you're a resident, uh, it would be a twenty five dollar fee. If you're a non-resident, it would be a fifty dollar fee and that's an annual fee. Um, and so we're hopeful that by doing this, it's a dedicated funding source for this A and S stuff because I mean, it's super important. They've already caught another boat coming through. It was a Lake Powell boat that was in Grand Junction that was just covered with them. Um, so I mean, the threat gets, I mean, it's worse and worse every year. I mean, um, it's really, it's critical that this one go through for, for the program. There's, there's so much at stake.
Why doesn't the National Park Service, which that Lake Powell is a national recreation park service run deal, why are they not more actively involved in managing the boats that leave, leave that lake? Because they're, you know, they've got them and there's no two ways about that. I think the impetus should be put on them to start, they've got gates at every launch, boat launch at Lake Powell. That they have to clean those boats before they let them leave that lake. And I, I, I think it's, it's putting the onus on us.
Right.
To protect ourselves when they're sending the infected boats out of their facility down there. And I, I think that's where some people ought to start hammering on them and saying, look, you've got the problem and you're not going to ship it to the rest of the world. You take care of it when those boats leave your, leave your.
Well, I mean, that would make more sense because I mean, you got them contained.
You got them, you know, right, and you know they're contaminated, you know, if they've been on that water.
Yeah, absolutely.
We do everything so damn backwards in this country sometimes.
Well, and it's, it's even more challenging because usually it's the state. So like in, I've told, I've never been to Lake Powell, but like in Utah, it's different than if you come off on the Arizona side and it's just kind of this hodgepodge. And it, it does, it makes it more challenging, but I mean, especially.
When it's a national park and all their, you know, they've got the control.
Right.
You know, they've got the.
Yes, sir.
You know, and the commissioner, we're in agreement, we were asked on some priorities in legislation this year, uh, what to support and not support. And we supported this Muscle Free Colorado Act where you're going to put the, uh, charge of fifty dollars for the boat registration, but that, so we're in agreement with that. However, um, you know, if you look back to history and you look back at the ATVs and the side by sides and motorcycles and the program that was started years ago to, um, put a twenty five dollar tag on your four wheelers and your side by sides so that you could expand trail use and do trail maintenance. So I could tell you if you fast forward to today, there's probably a hundred times more four wheeler, side by sides and motorcycles, but how many more trails have been opened? I can tell you the opposite has actually happened. There's less trails open for those side by sides and four wheelers. And there's, the money has expanded. Um, my question is, as we were talking about GOCO earlier, lottery tickets, thirty percent of the proceeds of lottery tickets, am I correct, goes to the Division of Wildlife?
I'm not sure what the percentage is, but that's, that's the next thing I had on my list. If you guys are ready to go to that. So we're good on the A and S stuff?
But I'd like to know where they're spending that money.
That's the question.
On the A and S stuff?
No, no, no.
Oh, on the trail stuff.
On the trail stuff. When you pay for those stickers so that it allows you to go out on, on public lands and be on those trails and, and roads. And like Commissioner Sukla said, there are way less of those trails and roads available to them now, and yet they keep dumping money. Where, where does that money go? They're not creating new trails and they're not building, building more and new trails.
Um, so I'll make a note.
And I know that's not just on state land, that's on fed lands too.
Sure.
Um, but, and the reason that I, because this Muscle Free Act, I understand it might raise so much money, but if you're getting thirty percent of the proceeds of lottery monies, why can't part of that money be used to fund, to, for inspection of the muscle? I mean, why can't money be reallocated? I know that we got a bum rap by a pit well. We are for reallocating money because we feel like the muscle is the most, uh, important issue facing our lakes and, uh, our irrigation and, you know, our way of life here. Why can't money be reallocated with that thirty percent?
Sure. So back to the trails thing, um, because I'm not an expert because that's more the park side of it, but I'll, for the next time I come back, I'll try to have some more info for you guys about how that money, you know, what comes in and how it's allocated out.
Okay, thanks.
Because I know that, uh, here locally, I mean, there have been some proposals, so, um, and I think like these are, I don't think that it'll go through this year, but I know the Forest Service is trying to get money for some of the new trails, like the side by side trails that are going to be, um, out of the Rico West of Lawrence travel stuff. Uh, so there are some new trails and I mean, that certainly is.
They're closing some trails too.
Well, they have, they have, but I'm just saying that's a, an example of a new trail or some trail rehab and stuff, but I can, uh, I'll come back with more info or I'll maybe even try to bring, we have a trails coordinator, a regional trails coordinator is a newer, newer guy. Maybe you guys would like to meet him. Um, so I got a note.
Actually, could you bring him up?
Yeah, no, I can do that, for sure.
Here, how that works.
Um, so the next thing in your packet, um, I just printed off, it's a, it's a front and back thing. This is a, a GOCO thing. And Commissioner Sukla, last time you had asked me about how is the money spent? So I printed just one copy, but I can, I'll send it to James. So if you guys all want electronically, this is an eighty page document. But I mean, this is the whole, uh, this is the twenty seven, twenty eighteen Great Outdoors Colorado Investment Plan with Colorado Parks and Wildlife.
Oh, thank you.
So there's the plan.
Can we keep this?
Yeah, absolutely. No, and like I say, I can, I will email it to James and then he can distribute it to you guys in case you can't sleep at night, but, um, in talking to, because I, I reached out to, we have a GOCO liaison, uh, with, that works for GOCO, but she's our liaison for Parks and Wildlife. And actually she offered that if you guys are interested, she would be willing to come down and visit with you guys and, or if you had other, you know, if it's just about Parks and Wildlife or you want the whole GOCO thing, they're willing to come down and talk to you guys.
Yeah, because they're involved in the conservation easements and all that stuff. She might be a real interesting person.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I will, I'll let Emily know. Her name is Emily Orbannick. She's out of Denver, but she's a great gal. Um, I'll get her info to James as well. And then that way you guys can set something up. And I mean, if you want me to participate, that's greater. If not, that's your call. But, um, in talking to her, basically, so that plan, the way that it works on how things are prioritized is there's the pool of money. And so if you look on kind of the, the two page thing that I gave you guys, the Cliff Notes, uh, on the second page, it talks about, it's the second paragraph down. It says the investment plan is a comprehensive document. So for the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, there's sixteen point six million dollars in funding for parks. And then there's also fifteen point one million for wildlife side. Um, and so what they do is, uh, GOCO has their strategic plan on what their priorities are. Parks and Wildlife has our strategic plan. And then they kind of merge those to see where are the overlap areas. And basically the outcome of where they're going to make the priorities is that seventy some page document that I just gave to you, Commissioner Sukla. That's how they prioritize stuff. Um, so I think that it would probably be, if you guys have that input about where you guys see those priorities being, that would probably be a great conversation to have with Emily so that she could carry that back to the GOCO board. Um, so I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, certainly, like I say, they have their bigger, bigger picture stuff, but, you know, carrying that input is a problem.
Close the lakes down because we, we, we can't do the proper inspections.
Right.
Uh, you're dumping, I don't know, dollars and dollars worth of fish in there. Some people can go fishing.
Right.
And then they can't get out there. And so we've, we've got a problem. We've got to save our, our, uh, we've got to protect our lakes, but as well, we've got to keep them open for the public.
Do that. So, um, so like I say, so that's the info I came up with on GOCO. So hopefully that'll help kind of answer some questions.
That is so helpful. Thank you so much.
Um, let's see here. So, and I'll try to, I'm already behind time. Um, another opportunity for you guys to interact is, um, you know, our Colorado, our Parks and Wildlife Commission, that's the citizen commission that oversees our agency. They move their meetings around. So like you guys had lunch with us in Durango.
Durango.
It's coming to Cortez in June.
Oh, cool.
So June seventh and eighth, the whole commission will be here in Cortez. I don't have any information yet on the venue or that stuff. As soon as I get it.
Can it come again like you did?
Absolutely. So, um, so basically just, you know, the commission has their agenda items, but there's also opportunities for just sort of public comment. And then there will also be like last year, we'll have a lunch where you guys will be invited to come and attend that. Um, so another potential opportunity to have some interaction with our Wildlife Commission, Parks and Wildlife Commission. Um, we have a new license system that's come on board. Um, so instead of the blue licenses that you've seen there, now they've changed the color to a green one. There's been a few hiccups with any new system, but we're getting those resolved. Uh, one of the changes though that has occurred is for big game license applications, you can't, you can no longer do a paper application. Everything has to be done online. Um, and it's because it actually, the paper applications cost us money. We actually, you know, there's a three dollar application fee. We actually lose money through the processing of it. So there's some new changes which are money saving changes. We understand though that some people don't have computers. Some people aren't savvy to that stuff. So we actually, uh, this Wednesday, uh, we're having a help session. So if you were having trouble applying, you can go down to the Parks Office there in Dolores. Those guys will be there from two to six. They'll have computers. They could help walk you through the process to apply for a deer license or a loose tag or whatever. So that's just, we've done, we did one in Dolores about two weeks ago. We have another one in Durango on the twentieth. We did one in Pagosa. So, we understand that especially a lot of our hunters or older folks that aren't necessarily as computer savvy as others, we understand this is a challenge, especially any new system. So that's why we thought it was important to try to do what we can to help folks. Uh, plus even if you missed those dates, you could still come by our office and we'll help anybody, you know, get things set out. Um, all right. Next is just, uh, big game license, uh, stuff. We're just getting in our information on our, our flights and our harvest and stuff. Um, still things look poor. Our recruitment of, uh, fawns and our calf numbers are still down.
Have they, have they been, have they been steadily declining?
They're continuing to decline despite big reductions in our cow licenses over, over the years.
Have you guys thought of, I, I mean, when you're, you know, I guess, and I'm sure you've looked at this, have you thought about, has Parks and Wildlife thought about reducing the number of months that those animals are hunted?
There's been a lot of internal talk. So, um, we do the, we manage in five year season structure. So blocks, so we set the, the basic statewide framework. That's coming up for, uh, revision. It'll start this summer or next fall. Internally, yes, we're absolutely.
Could that be a comment that's asked on June seventh and eighth?
Yes. And that's what I'll, so I'll keep you guys informed once that process gets kicked off. But I mean, have them the support of whatever your opinion is, but that, if you want to present that point of view, it helps. Just because unfortunately we, you know, we try to have these public meetings and nobody shows up generally. Or it's one guy who has one very particular thing. It would be great to get your input because you guys hear from a diverse, you know, the whole population of the county. We need people there that are willing to come.
We'll post a note, a, a letter in the paper that, that we're, there's thought, talk about closing the hunting season next year.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, yeah. We're shutting the plum off. There's going to be no hunting for three years.
I'll be in plain clothes. I'm taking that day off, but I'll sit in the meeting. That sounds really good, really good. Uh, so anyway, so there's going to be some minor tweaks, probably some minor reductions on our, our elk into your license this year, but not, not anything major. Uh, we already talked about mountain lions. I was going to say another kind of an example of the issues is we just in Echo Basin, there was a mountain lion eaten on goats and stuff. So we had to go in and catch it because the season had closed there. Had to catch it and then euthanize it.
We got a guy out here at Easton have found a, he was out hunting sheds and found a, found a six point bull elk that had been killed by a mountain lion.
Oh, yeah. Well, the reason I brought that, I have a personal experience. And what it is, is this mountain lion was caught here. It had two air tags. So it was at the stone property and, and, and I understand why you dumped it down there because we were the only private landowner down there in Jet Valley. But we used to have, uh, twenty some turkeys, not anymore because the lion killed them all except for four. And where they treed the lion, they treed it fifteen minutes on dry ground, which I'm told that that's hard to do.
Right.
And it was a hundred yards from our, uh, well, not a hundred yards, maybe three or four hundred yards from our camp. And they treed the mountain lion in, uh, a tree where my daughter's sport was at the bottom of it. And so I, what I'm trying to, how many, it's my understanding that if it's a problem lion, they tranquilize it, they put the air tag in it, turn it back loose. And then if they catch it again, they put another air tag in it.
Right.
What is the policy before they are, if it's a problem lion, it's concerning to me that it would be dropped off?
So, um, we have a policy about when we either relocate or when we euthanize problem animals. Um, so like one that kills livestock is almost always going to be euthanized because we don't want to just transfer that problem somewhere else. Um, the one you're talking about, I think was one, I can't remember off the top of my head where they had caught it, but I mean, it was one where it was just like it had wandered into town, kind of the situation. So it wasn't a dangerous lion that was, you know, a livestock predator. You know, certainly anyone that, uh, endangers human life, it's, you know, we can't have that. We can't endanger human life. So, um, yeah, so that's the, the basic premises is that, and I mean, that's where, you know, we're, there's kind of a push and pull, you know, just with our society because there are some people who say anything that we catch, we should euthanize. And then there's people that, you know, they don't want to see anything ever put down, no matter what bad stuff it's done. But, so that's why we have that policy that allows us, so I mean, you know.
But to me, what's, you know, you've got a desert big horn sheep herd down there that you're trying to increase.
Right.
And you dump a problem, a problem mountain lion down there. Doesn't make sense to me.
Sure.
Anyway, that's.
Keep, keep your gun loaded down there, Larry Don.
Um.
It took one week for another mountain lion to move back in there.
Right. Well, yeah. Well, I mean, that's why we're really, we're optimistic that with this new statewide mountain lion plan, we're going to have a lot more flexibility that we can really try to have a bigger impact and, and actually manage these lion populations more than we probably have in the past. Um, A and S stuff, just, you know, for our local boating season, because we just talked about it, um, there's not any major changes, you know, in the works at this point. Uh, so like at McPhee, we're working with the Forest Service, D O B C D, um, D O R, trying to figure out when the open dates are. Um, so that's going to be determined, but it will look pretty similar to last year. Um, the, the best news though is that, um, there's going to be more public opportunity for boating at Groundhog Reservoir. Uh, you know, last year it was limited just a couple of days a week. Um, the concessionaires are graciously going to expand that. Uh, so there should be a lot more opportunity for folks to get their boats out on the water doing that stuff. So that's a really promising and a good thing just because we heard and I'm sure you guys did too, you know, lots of folks were disgruntled just because can't always get your boat out there. So.
Well, I'll tell you, and it's this story, Jim's here, he can tell if it's true or not, but it is one hell of a story. And there's a guy went up there with a closed bow boat. It was denied access because it wasn't open. So he got a chainsaw out and he cut, uh, part of the bow off. Is this a true story?
We don't want rumors. Now, we did the rumors.
I've seen all kinds of stuff in there. I mean, people are backing their boats down into the rocks on the other side of the dam. And, and that we have seen. Uh, they're, they're making access.
Where there's no access.
When we deny them access.
They're just going somewhere.
They're just circumventing us to try and find a different way to get in. And, uh, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
It's a, it's a big deal.
So.
Because if that, if that lake gets infected, guess what? The whole works is infected. The whole works.
Here's my bigger concern because Matt and I have had this conversation of the hot scotching back and forth between Mayor Morni and Groundhog. Because there's nothing happening.
And Mayor Morni, no inspections, no nothing. There's nothing going on there. Wow.
So, and that's just again, why our surveillance and all the, the work that we're doing is, you know, that much more, more important. So. Anyways, but I think that's really, I appreciate, you know, Jim and Bonnie up there, you know, expanding that because it's, um, like I say, I mean, it's a destination lake. And I mean, we're still, as CPW, we're still trying to, um, we're still working towards like, we want to put up a sign like in Dolores before we start heading up, just so people are aware of what those restrictions are, you know, the last thing any of us want because then Jim and Bonnie have to deal with somebody who's angry, who's driven from and also wanted more.
That's why that guy with the chainsaw, he's like, I drove a lot of work around.
Yeah, my God, I'm going to.
I would have loved to have seen that.
Yeah. So, um, last thing.
I think, I think Colorado Parks and Wildlife should start putting pressure on the national park system at, at Lake Powell.
Oh, yeah, that makes so much sense.
Start making them and making them sterilize those boats as they come off that lake.
Sure.
And then that alleviates, that alleviates a whole bunch of stuff here.
Um, the last thing is just, um, our fish stocking is kicking up, you know, now that that season is upon us. Um, so like at the twin spruce ponds.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, we still have that, we have a lease with those folks, but you know, that lake gets about fifty five hundred ten inch trout per year. So they, they stock it about once a month. Uh, Groundhog's going to be stocked. Um, and then like Toton Summit, Hewitt, and there went up, you know, they get a, throughout the year, they get, you know, blue. throughout the year, they get, you know, blue gill, channel catfish, largemouth bass and crappie. So our, our fish stocking program is going strong. So it should maintain a real good fishery. Um, you know, the reports, even though you can't get your boat on, you know, the motorized boat on, uh, on Naringanup, guys are catching really good walleyes. You know, some guys are using like those kayaks, fishing kayaks and that stuff. And those guys that are, are doing that are still, you know, they're being really successful. So, um, like I say, it, we'll, we'll see hopefully if this A and S stuff goes through, maybe that'll give us some latitude that we can, you know, try to get the lakes open a couple of days. We'll just have to see what that looks like. So anyways, that was all I have for you guys. And I'm sorry.
No, it's.
Over, over time.
No, you got some important stuff for us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, so yeah, so I will.
Forward to the June meeting. That's nice. Appreciate it getting here.
And then I'll make sure and I'll get that info to James about, uh, GoCo and the other stuff that we talked about. So anyways.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Hi, Desert Conservation District.
Morning, Steve.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Hey, Steve.
Good to see you.
Morning, David.
Good to see you too.
Good. Good to see you.
We'll, uh, we'll try to be brief here.
You can get your car up.
Yeah. I, uh, first I wanted to kinda give you a quick update on the conservation district. Uh, we had some big changes last year. We had a complete hundred percent turnover in our staff.
Whoa.
Judy retired as our district manager and we've hired, uh, Victoria Peterson. She started in November. And Travis Custer, our, our district technician moved over to Montezem Land Conservancy. And, but we've hired another, uh, technician, Greg Lamming. He started, uh, in January. And they, they closed down, temporarily closed down the basin salinity program. And so we had to lay off that individual. Well, they started it back up and so we've hired another basin salinity technician. So we're staffed back up to our, our, you know, part-time manager, thirty hours a week and two full-time employees. We have a big change last year, a big role over there. Uh, but we're continuing with our normal programs. We've got, you know, our master steward program. We're gonna do it in the fall this year. That's our nine-week program. Irrigation water management, we're gonna have going. Uh, Greg Lamming, our technician is gonna be spending most of his time out in the full service area. Uh, working with the D W C D, uh, landowners out there and continuing with the dragon line, you know, project. We're gonna go ahead. We've got some, uh, changes we're gonna do on that dragon line center pivot project. We're gonna upgrade some of the filtration. You know, there's still quite a bit of interest. I'm trying to figure out how to get that center pivot technology working in that full service area. There's twenty-eight thousand acres that amongst two hundred farmers that, you know, you, you can't change that many side roads. You know, we're, we're trying to get that, working on that. And, you know, still doing the, you know, the tree program and the school to farm and all the, you know, that we've done all along. Uh, probably one of the biggest things that we're doing is, and this is all related to our funding, is we're, uh, we've been researching this, that we're going for a mill levy.
Saw that, read that.
In a, in a mail election.
Point five, is that right?
It's a half a mill. So on a, you know, normal property here, two hundred thousand dollar property is ten bucks. But it's, it's one of those things of, you know, we've been here for seventy-five years, you know, we struggled along. We need to get, you know, consistent, reliable funding.
Will, will that fund you, Steve? That half a mill, will that fund you?
Well, we're limited by state statute to that. We can't ever go higher than that.
Okay.
That's, that's for our, for our type of special district, we're limited to that. And it will be close to what we need. I mean, we always wanna add programs in. And as we're seeing, you know, holes in the conservation services, you know, we can always expand and, and go beyond that. But it's, you know, mill levy's a tough thing to come up with. You know, I'm, I'm positive about it, but you know, we've got an election committee, uh, working on that. So, you know, and it'll be a mail invalid in, in, uh, for the May eighth special district, excuse me, special district election.
Cause I have had four phone calls about that, that, uh, letter that was sent out from the law, the law firm in Denver. And on the second page of that, it says, um, something about or designated by the landowner, meaning that the way that it looks like it's interpreted, that somebody other than the landowner can vote. And they have problems with that. Do you?
I, I'm not sure of that. That, that's part of the election process. You know, we've hired a, a firm in Denver that has done these before, and that was part of the election, that all corporate properties received that letter within forty-five days or something like that of the election. And I, I never saw the letter itself. My understanding was that they wanted to get one designated individual for the corporation to vote for that property so that you don't have, and that, that's the, the reason for that letter going ahead. That was just.
Corporate owned property.
It was corporate owned properties only.
The law firm probably could've did a better job describing that, maybe.
I can, I can, I can get with them. I, I don't know whether that's form letter, created letter. They've done this for years and years for many special districts on the western slope. And that's why we selected that.
People are extremely upset saying, you mean that somebody can vote that doesn't even own the property? Well, how is that transparent?
Well, they just didn't obviously see that it was designed for corporations or LLCs.
Well, I'm not sure. I have the, well, I don't have the letter with me, but I didn't see where it, it was confusing to me as well. Of course, it doesn't take much to do that.
That's, that's what lawyers do, right?
They keep you confused.
That probably wasn't intended.
But anyway, yeah, I'll check on it and find out. I'll see what it is. I, I don't know whether, where that, who generated it. It, it's, I got no idea. I, I look at the election calendar and there's something every day that has to be filed. It's just amazing. But anyway, that's one of the things the conservation district's doing. Both conservation districts, Mankas and Dolores are, are, you know, in the same process. This is a, a combination brochure that we put out for the two districts that we're handing out, just a generic thing on what the districts, you know, have done, been doing it. And just to kinda get people aware that, you know, of, of the activities that, uh, are going on, you know, I think we can always have more awareness out there.
Well, Steve, I, I, I believe in your conservation district. There's no, no doubt in my mind that you're very beneficial to everybody in this county that, that has any association with farming, agriculture, water, I mean, even gardening, you know, whatever. Uh, what I'm, what I'm going to be very excited to see or what I'm, my, I am hopeful of, that that's going to be expressed in the voting of the, of that mill levy for you guys to, to establish yourself with a, a, a level of funding that's gonna be substantial enough to carry your operation. And then that's gonna, that's gonna tell me that, that, because I know, I know you're here and I know you're needing money and I know we cut you, we, we had to, in our budget this year, we had to cut you off. And, and that was not with any great joy on our part to people that we had to stop funding, cause there are a lot of good things out there. But it's gonna do me a lot more good to see the voters vote on you guys and say, yeah, we, we feel you're valid enough that we want to give you that mill levy to sustain your operation. That you're, you're valuable enough rather than, rather than me making the decision for their tax dollars. They're gonna be making the decision for their tax dollars and I like that.
Well, I appreciate that support, you know, that's.
But I support you. I think you're, I think you're a good, a good operation. What you do is good. It's beneficial. You benefit a lot of people and I, I'm just hopeful that your, that your mill levy election goes, goes through positively for you. That's, that's it.
We wanted to come, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry. Um, we just wanted to come and approach the county again. Um, you have funded us in the past, not fully. And we're expecting to, I mean, last year you cut us ten percent as you did everybody. Um, but I, I sit on both the extension board and this one. And I just see how valuable both of those groups are, um, in improving agriculture and with the technical expertise that, and they both do different things. And I've really been pleased to see how the county has really stepped up and helped extension become what it can be and will continue to be. So I also see the great benefits that the conservation district does. And so I thought, let's just not say, oh, they're not gonna fund us. I thought, let's go back and put our best foot forward, see if there's any partial funding that would help us with our budget because our funds, traditional funds have been driving. And so figured it can't hurt to go and ask again and say, we're doing these really good things. This is another whole benefit that we can keep our farmers improving water, soil conservation. And so, you know, can't hurt. You can say no again. But, but, um, I know how much the, the county has been putting into the extension program. And, and it's good. I don't wanna detract from that at all, cause I firmly believe in that. But I also know how much this helps. And yes, we're looking at the mill levy. We're looking at every way we can to continue with these good services. So hoping you guys would reconsider it and, um, do some partial funding. Um, so that we can not have to step back on some of these things and actually do more than we can do. So that's why we're here. So.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's a, and, and that's what we're trying to emphasize, you know, through the election committee on, you know, as a board, you know, we've gotta kinda stand back from it. But on the election committee, you know, it's emphasizing, you know, the changes in, in funding. And, you know, the successful districts do have stable funding behind it. And that's, that's kinda where, where we're, we're, we're needing to get to. You know, to keep providing these services, you know, we just can't, as, as federal funds and state funds keep getting redirected, you know, away from administrative things. Uh, you know, it's just like our, one of our major funders, again, this last year cut us back by two thirds of what we've gotten in the past. And, and it's just like, well, we just, you know, we don't have the severance tax monies anymore. We don't have, you know, these are the whole, it's the whole gamut, you know, so it's just kinda, that's where we're at. And, and I think the important thing is, is to, at this point, you know, realize that we do provide a significant service for the county. And that we believe that, you know, agriculture is a backbone of this county. I mean, it was, that's how it started. That's what's been developed around. That's what's maintained here for a hundred and forty years or whatever. I mean, it, it's, it was agriculture. It's holding it together. Our, you know, we've lost so many large contractors and stuff over the last five years, you know, but we still got our agriculture and we've got our water. You know, and those are the key factors that, you know, we need to keep, keep in mind that, that these soils and there's water, you know, we need to improve our soils. We've mined our soils. You know, they, they, we've degraded and we need to build them back up. You know, we, we've got to make some changes in agriculture. One of our big things is.
I think we had poor soil before we even farmed it. We don't have.
It was marginal.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's, you know, it's changed, you know, as we've taken nutrients out of it. But, you know, regardless, it's the backbone. This is what we live for. And, and, and we need to find ways when we've got fifty percent, you know, our, the average age of our farmers is sixty. Half of this land is gonna change in the next ten or fifteen years. How, how are we gonna deal with that? How are we gonna deal with farm succession? How are we gonna deal, we can't have, you know, keep getting subdivided into three acre lots. We've already got a surplus of that. You know, so this is, we've gotta make farming profitable. We've gotta make it, uh, work in this county. You know, I'm just a firm believer that this is what we, we started out with. This is what we're living on. And we're one of the few areas that we're fortunate to have enough water. Even in a dry, I mean, as dry as it is, that we're looking good, we'll, we'll make it through this year. There's so many other places that aren't gonna do it. You know, we're just, I'm amazed. So anyway.
We've had lots of conversations about it. And, and to make, how do we get our kids to come back and replace those, uh, aging farmers? And it's money. It, when you, when you make the value of beef, uh, what it should be at, double what it is right now. It used to be there. When you can take, you know, that brings back, I don't know if you read in the newspaper about the, uh, the two, the new four H program there in Mankas. They formed it, it's just been formed last year and they asked them, they wanted them to feed the school, the Mankas schools with, uh, beef. And so they, and that's the only way that they, and I think they gave them a little bit of seed money. It wasn't very much. They went ahead. They produced the beef and they've got, they need three steers to do this or three heifers, whatever. But they actually came to, first they went to the city, said, no, we're not gonna do that. If they could get the funding for two more years, they need two thousand dollars. Then it'll be self-sustaining and they will be able to, um, raise enough beef to feed that, those, the Mankas schools for a year. And, but they cannot get the two thousand dollars. The city would not give them the money. Uh, we're sh- short here. And it's just, it's sad.
It's, it's, yeah. It's always do more with less.
You know, it's. I'll tell you, that's exactly what we're doing here. I mean.
Well, it's, I think that, you know, the school to farm program is, you know, it's in all the schools. That, that, you know, those kids are doing.
Values to buy them, see, cause people wanna buy local. And they'll pay more for local.
Yeah. And, and it's, it's getting the kids realizing where their food comes from. It doesn't come from the city market. It comes from, you know, it's, there's a cow out there. There was a garden out there. There was, you know, wheat field out there. You know, those are the things of getting that, that connection. And I think that's the big thing of this school to farm program. I think M L C's project on Fozzie's Farm is the same thing. You know, of trying to create that interest and that knowledge. And, and I think that's, that's, that's where we're, we're, you know, there's a lot of ideas and stuff that are, are, are growing around us. And it's just, it's gonna take a community to make it happen.
How do you get to where, uh, so you can go to Four Seasons Nursery and you can go, they raise those tomatoes all winter. And they raise broccoli. And you can go get a thing of their cherry tomatoes and you can pop one of them in your mouth. And that's the best tasting tomato. But then you can go to Walmart, city markets, they play, you can take the same tomato and you can't taste nothing. It's just like taste in water.
Well.
Their broccoli, they have figured it out. Eat their broccoli. There's no bitter taste. They have figured, figured out which ones. How do we get that? Because taste, I mean, it's unbelievable. You.
Well, the, the conservation district started the, the high tunnel program, the hoop house program. You know, we talked to the state and had them, you know, the first conservation district in the state to bring high tunnels in through the conservation districts and through N R C S cost share. And there's, I think there's about fifty of them in the county now.
That's an ongoing program that we still have.
Ongoing program to bring in hoop houses to add to that shoulder season. Just to add, you know, if you can run two more months in the spring and two more months in the fall, if you can start out, start your tomatoes in January in a hoop house and have them ready in May, you know, you're just, you're that far ahead. And that, that's the things that conservation districts do. That's what agriculture does. And that's some of the changes that are, that we're trying to implement. I mean, it's all a little bit at a time. It's, you know, looking at niche, niche things. But I mean, that's kinda what we do. That's our job.
Certainly have no argument from us.
Yeah. But it, well, but you know, we, we have appreciated your support in the past and, you know, any support you can give us, you know, going forward is more than appreciated. This is all for us. It's for the community. You know, we're all in this together. That's kinda the way we're looking at it.
The soil testing. Um, is there anything worked out with Montezem County with somebody who's wanting to do a, a soil test when there's property exchanged, it's changing hands? Um, and, and it's part of the loan agreement that, is there a service available from you guys to test the soil?
No.
Through the county?
No, but that would be another thing that would be great to do.
Our, our technician has gone out and does, part of their time is spent doing site analysis and, and they'll, they do individual soil tests for them. And we have, you know, an M P K test that is available.
On request.
But not on, yeah, that's on request.
It's not a required thing. I don't know if you'd want it required, but you know, the more you can learn about your soils, the better you can grow and, and make it productive.
Well, just for an example, last week, and it's his property, my wife is selling it. The guy was buying the property and, and that was a requirement. And he was out there digging it himself and he sent it somewhere else. He didn't use you guys. He used somebody else. I don't know where. But I'm just thinking to myself, why? You guys are available right here. He, maybe he didn't even know about you.
Well, yeah, there, there's the laboratory tests, like the Servitech, you go back to Dodge City, Kansas, where most of them get sent. You know, it takes an extensive lab to do that. An M P K test, you know, can be done. But when you get, that's nitrogen, phosphorus and potassium. But when you get into the miners, you know, you know, the, the sulfur and all that, you know, then, you know, know, then, you know, those are what are, are, you know, it takes a sophisticated lab to do.
CSU have a lab to do that?
No. They send them to Servitech. I, I think, you know, Tom has got the sacks downstairs, and they, they're all mailed off, you know.
So that's more through the Extension Program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can also do that. Um, we're not trying to duplicate what Extension does, we're doing kind of a different thing. I, ju- just the water, the work on water conservation alone is worth everything that Conservation District does. You know, with the continuing, well, the ever-increasing water shortages that we're gonna be faced with, the more we can help people manage their water, conserve it, um, just that alone is worth the whole Conservation District idea, let alone everything else that we do. So we wanna continue to stay in business and help everybody. So that's why we're, we're here, hopefully, to have you guys reconsider.
Keep us in the loop.
Because it takes multiple things for us to make this happen.
Right.
So that's what you would use when, so we're gonna get phone calls, I already have on the, your letter, and then when the ballot comes, you're gonna call, hey, why should I vote?
Vote yes.
And, and, you know, why should I vote yes? And you're, and my response should be the water.
Just, that's just one of our programs. It's one of the more important ones, I believe. I mean, we have to conserve the water.
How do I say, when I vote yes? What do I say?
Because we provide, well, we've got some things in that, in, in that brochure, but what we do, um, this was all started at the Dust Bowl days, to conserve water and soil. And with our irrigated ag, which we have a lot of, both the full-service and the MBI places, um, we can help conserve water. And so we can continue to keep our agriculture viable and more cutting-edge than it used to be. So every help we can, everything you can do to help farmers, um, and if people conserve water and use it in a wiser way, is gonna continue to ensure that we're viable in this county.
Yeah, we have, generally, we have two irrigation water management seminars, workshops done. We hand out soil probes at all those, so people can test the moisture level. We do two of those a year with NRCS technicians. We've got, uh, our Master Steward Program, which is a nine-week program, one day, one night a week, you know, three hours, going through everything from fencing to water to, you know, laying out your property. I mean, it's, it's really designed for new people coming in, you know, they buy their three-acre, five-acre dream, you know, how do I, how do I do something with this? Where do I plant my orchard? Where do I, you know, we've got that program going, you know, and there's a big emphasis on water there. Uh, you know, our, the Dragon Line thing is, is an experimental trial. Along with that, we've got, we're doing some, uh, you know, side roll nozzles, exchanges to try to get people to get back to pressure compensating nozzles. We've gotta get it, we've gotta get even distribution. You know, we're never gonna get around, away from side rolls. There's just, our, our property's too cut up, you can't put a center pivot on forty acres, you know, or thirty acres. And so we're gonna be, we're gonna have a certain amount of side rolls, but we can make those side rolls efficient. Many of them have been in, they started the Cost Share Program in seventy-seven. You know, most of the pipelines in this county are done on the Cost Share Program. Those Cost Share Programs were funneled through, most of them were funneled through the Conservation District.
Like the Seamen Ditches years ago.
Yeah. The, the, the whole entire Basin Salinity Program, which is, used to be about five, fifty percent of the Cost Share money, was a direct pass through, through the Conservation Districts. We were the ones, we signed the contracts, we review the contracts. We look at, at those, is this a good project? Uh, you know, ninety percent of the pipelines are done on a Cost Share basis. This is all in coordination with, you know, Conservation Districts. We were created to be the oversight of the, the, the old SCS. That was the design behind Conservation Districts, to be the go-between. And I'm, you know, I don't wanna belabor this, but that's, that's our job, is to.
You guys on this election, and I'm trying to help you, I'm not trying to.
Oh, I, I understand that, Larry.
Do you guys have a fact sheet, you know, like when we, you go to vote, and they'll, they'll give you a for and against, the people that are, why you should vote this way, and why you shouldn't vote this way.
We, we had, we had a booth at the Ag Expo, the committee did, we've got a trifold brochure out, I didn't think it was appropriate to bring it, uh, from the committee, we've got[1727.08]